Good evening, let's begin with a moment of silence to think about what's going on in the world today and how fortunate we are. Thank you very much. We will begin with officially calling the meeting to order, welcoming those who are listening in and thanking those in the staff that are present and the commissioners. We have everyone here tonight. Number three on the agenda, pledge allegiance to the flag if you will stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America.
And to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of the just for all.
Number four on the agenda, consideration of approving the agenda as presented. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I have a suggested addition to the agenda. The materials have been included and are a request from the county to accept or deny the apportionment of CARES Act 2 funding to the county that will require board action to accept the money.
Assuming that the commissioners will agree to put that on the agenda, where would you like to add it? Hearing no comment, I'm just gonna say.
Eleven A is probably as good as anything.
Eleven A? Okay. Okay, any more comments?
Yes. I would like to add to number eight, if possible, to include with Seagull and Deal Street, also to include Canal Drive at the request of a couple emails that I received to do that.
Everybody understand that?
Yes.
Anything else? Hearing none. Is there a motion? We approve the amended agenda.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimously approved. Let's move to number five on the agenda. The consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of June 16 and the reconvene meeting of June 18. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion for Mr. Tyner to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Brown, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimously approved. We'll move to item number six on the agenda, public comments. General items. Madam Clerk, do you have anything?
We have four comments before the board. I have them on the internet, but Christie and I would be happy to read them if the board desires.
Okay, if you would please.
The first one is from Suzanne Council. Dear mayors and Holden Beach Commissioner, thank you for placing the request of dog park on your agenda. The residents are under deserved in regard to a dog park since the closest one is several miles from the island. There's no question that you can act quickly to accommodate the needs of the resident community and vacationers as the minutes read that it has been a record money-making year for Holden Beach and there is excess tax money on hand. Other evidences are the recreational courts in place near town hall and the free parking, restroom, shower and water for nonpaying vacationers. Yet for everyone basketball or pickleball player, I would venture to guess that there are twice as many dog owners who need an area where they can safely and legally exercise their dogs off-leash. Resident dog owners here have made their dog-related needs known. When you took away our dog park, you indicated to us that when the dog park dried, it would be returned to same use. Please keep your word. Thank you.
The next comment is from Jeff Hodges. Mr. Mayor and BOC members, I would like address the subject of our dog park. The old dog park on Scotchbonnet Road was taken away with the assurance we would have the use of it again in a few months. This was never going to happen. The residents on our island who are dog owners need a dog park. The visitors to our island need a dog park. And most importantly, the dogs need one. Dogs need room to move, exercise and run if they feel the need. A fenced yard is not always the answer as many of us have very small yards. Dog parks provide a social environment for interaction among different breeds. The owners also can enjoy this and many new friends can be made. The land needed can be modest and upkeep minimal. To prepare the former area will take time and no small amount of funds. The town has property, though I'm not versed in all the locations, that may be useful as even a temporary dog park. There is land east of the bridge bordered by Ferry on the west, Canal on the north and Shrimp on the east. Its location could provide parking and a very generous sized park. Although this may be private land, an arrangement for temporary use may be possible. I know that non-pet owners do not see this as a necessity, yet it will be an enhancement to our permanent residents and visitors' quality of life here on Holden Beach. When the very warm weather is here, as it is now, dog walking can almost be dangerous. The heat and traffic are a challenge that a dog park would help negate. When we consider the amount of money spent buying the house next to the pump station and return on investment of our tax dollars, a dog park will be a positive return immediately. The jury is still out on the house purchase, though broker and seller came out ahead. We, your constituents, are still awaiting some more positive action on this as now that the budget has been tackled, you may focus on this and the other loose ends on the agenda. Thank you for your time and consideration. Jefferson and Meline Hodges, 254 Brunswick Avenue West.
And the next one's from Laura Brockmorton. As the commissioners' meeting is not open to the public, I'm writing in regards to the agenda item dog park. I'm requesting the town of Holden Beach reestablish a dog park. I have owned my home since 2008 and relocated here full-time in 2017. Prior to being full-time, I used the dog park one year and after my move, the dog park on Scotchbonnet was used daily. I soon learned the dog was used by many folks on a daily basis and during many guests here. When the park closed, we were told it would reopen in the spring of 2019. To date, nothing has been done to reestablish a dog park on the island. Living here full-time, I have learned permanent residents have very little influence on the decisions the town makes as the tax base from absentee owners and those whose only interest in the island is that the investment seems to be of greater importance than the quality of life for full-time residents. Therefore, in an effort to include those homeowners, I searched the rental reality sites to determine the number of pet-friendly homes on Holden Beach. I found approximately 125 homes advertised as pet-friendly on the island. This number seems to increase each year as more families now travel with their pets and non-resident owners are responding to their guest requests to allow pets. A dog park would benefit not only the permanent residents, but our seasonal guests who bring their pets with them. I understand if you are not a dog owner, why you may not see the importance of a dog park. However, those of us with dogs understand the need for dogs to socialize and have a place to run off-leash. A dog park provides not only a place for the dog to socially run, but also affords the owner a park experience. Yes, dog owners could fence their yards, but a small fenced yard does not provide the same experience for the dog or owner. Since we are reportedly having a record rental season and real estate sales are hot in spite of COVID-19, surely the town can locate the funds to reestablish a dog park on the island.
This is from Tracy Thomas. Heather, please read my comments at the meeting tomorrow. Thanks. Speed limit change. First of all, let's be clear that the speed limit on Ocean Boulevard West of the pier is 45 miles an hour with a seasonal reduction to 35. So Jeremy's argument in his memo dated 7/13/20 saying we cannot increase the limit to 45 due to NCDOT traffic ordinance, Chapter 3, Section 24 is flawed. The speed limit is currently 45. And she references the NCDOT maps, ArcGIS.com. The rest of Jeremy's arguments then support the current 45 mile an hour speed limit. This speed limit was determined by a North Carolina traffic and engineering study and is safe and correct speed for that section of the road. We should accept the science on the correct speed limit and the fact that there has never been an incident, per Jeremy, at the January meeting, and not change it because a couple people want to drive their golf carts on the road in the winter. Please make a fact-based decision and not based on unsubstantiated fear of accidents. We currently do not have an official crosswalk in that area. If and when we get them, perhaps the speed limit will need to be revisited, but until then, that shouldn't be used as a reason. Hopefully, where crosswalks are needed will also be based on a scientific study and not someone subjectively choosing. Finally, when surveyed in the fall of 2019, almost 80% of over 400 respondents wanted the 45 miles an hour to remain in effect during the email to 100 people is not a random sample like the survey was. I hope that the commissioners will listen to the majority of people. I live full-time on the West End and feel very strongly that the speed limit remains 45 miles an hour in the off-season.
Anything else, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Now we're ready to move on to number seven. What in the world? It's like the sound system in the church. It wakes everybody up in the middle of the sermon. Okay, number seven, town boards and committees. Madam Clerk?
At the last Board of Commissioners meeting, you decided to vote on the positions that we could fill without having to interview people. I put in your packets who is eligible for what board and what positions. I put ballots at your desk, but my suggestion would be that maybe you guys vote to put everybody who can be on all the boards with the exception of Board of Adjustment and then just fill out the Board of Adjustment ballots. That's the only one that has the where you can move alternates up to the regular. Everybody else would be in their same position as before. So we could use ballots for all the boards or we could do vote to keep the same people and then just do the ballots for the Board of Adjustment, whatever the board chooses.
My pleasure.
I would make a motion that we re-nominate the people on the currently on the Boards of Park and Recreation Advisory Board, the Inlet Beach Protection Board and the Planning and Zoning Board, and that we vote for to fill the available spots on the Board of Adjustment.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan. Is there a second?
Is that all the boards? That's all the boards that you're speaking of? That's all the boards together?
Well, that's the four boards that we're going to vote on tonight.
They say three of them.
Then do all four.
Well, the fourth one you
The fourth one we vote by ballot.
Well, the fourth one you gotta choose somebody.
We'll choose somebody.
What he's asking is just
His motion is for three.
And we have to vote on this one.
Okay, we've got a motion for the three. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is that we nominate and approve the three people on the boards that I mentioned. That we can do that and that we vote to fill the openings on the Board of Adjustment. That's the motion.
Okay. Everybody understand the motion? We have a second for Mr. Tyner. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimously approved. Anything else on that subject, Madam Clerk?
We just need to fill out the ballots for the Board of Adjustment.
All right, we're gonna vote. Or you commissioners are gonna vote. Madam Clerk, do you have a computer to tabulate the findings?
I don't know. This computer might be a little broken now, but I'll try. We have a tie. These two were selected and then we need to do a vote between Mary Lou and Jack for the third position.
Okay, how do you want to do that?
If you guys want to do it on paper, you could just write if you would like to choose between Mary Lou, Laren and Jack Lowman. If you could pick between the two and just sign your name or do it out loud, whichever one you want. But if it's on a piece of paper, I just need your name on there also.
How do you want to do it? Jack or Mary Lou? Between those two, we have a tie.
One would be the regular and one would be the alternate. We're just gonna pick her out.
Somebody help me out.
We could do it out loud or paper, whichever is easier for you guys.
Won't you just give us our ballots back and we'll just write on the bottom between those two? Just to make it easy. Thank you.
So you're gonna write one name or the other?
Write one name or the other. Mary Lou or Jack?
As the alternate or the ma-- I'm sorry, I miss-- Are we voting for Mary Lou or Jack for
The regular.
The regular.
Get right here on the bottom there.
Okay, it was extremely close, as close as you can get. That's Mary Lou has prevailed. Okay? We are now moving to number eight. Mr. Murdock?
It's been asked of me to bring this to the board's attention to look at doing something with Deal, the unpaved streets on the island of Deal and Seagull Street. After the agenda was released, I got a couple requests to include Canal Drive as well. I think there's still a couple more streets that are not paved and I don't mean to leave those out, but wasn't formally tasked with asking for that directly. So we may want to consider doing them all. There is a lot, there's substantial town effort involved in keeping these dirt roads, muddy roads, for lack of a better word, maintained. It can't be free. The town workers are constantly going out there, scraping them, trying to make them, you know, where you can get up and down. They're terrible after rain. I've had the privilege of working a couple years now on Seagull Street and it's awful. So the, some of the residents have asked specifically, how can we do something about this? Whether it's gravel or pavement, they don't really haven't asked, you know, haven't said that they prefer one way or the other. They just want something done that will hold up after a rain where they can get to their homes without driving through mud. So the next question that they ask is not only how do you do that, how do you pay for it? And how much is it gonna cost? So at this point in time, I think I'm asking for a, just a, not a in-depth engineering estimate, but a, just a, maybe a drive-by, so to speak, estimate of how much somebody thinks it might cost to pave or gravel these streets and then where that can be at least given to the residents on the street where they can make a decision. And then at that point, correct me if I'm wrong, David, a petition then has to to be done. And then it's up to the residents actually if the street gets any improvement or not. So that's what I'm asking for right now.
Cost estimate.
So I make a motion that we proceed to get an engineering cost estimate to improve specifically Deal, Seagull and Canal Drive.
Do you want to hire an engineer to do it now?
Yeah. I don't know who else can do it. And I don't know what's been done typically in the past to get one addressed.
What would it take? I mean, do we have to have an engineer to give a rough cost on paving these streets? Or is it something, I mean, that's what we're trying to find out? Is to have an engineer do it? And there would be some kind of little cost associated with that?
Probably if you want to include Canal Drive, under order of about $1,500.
Board willing to spend $1,500 to do that?
That's the one street. I'm gonna ask another question of you, David. Once this engineering work has been done and if the residents on the streets petition to have the town pave or improve the streets, is the engineering cost then passed on as part of that?
All of the costs, the planning, the programming, the engineering, any surveys that have to go, the total programmatic costs become part of the project costs that are apportioned to the residents?
I just want that to be cleared up, that that cost will be passed on if indeed they choose to improve their streets.
Mr. Hewitt, I have a question of you. This item number eight on the agenda, listing Deal and Seagull and we added Canal Drive, but for the last several years, we've talked about the east end down here, the last, what, 300 yards, 400 yards? And we've talked about that, so I'm just wondering, is this appropriate time or why is it not been continued on our list? And Police Chief might be able to add something to this because that road
Are you talking about our list of the priority of the paved streets list that we do every year to repave about any sort of that list?
Well, that list or the list that we're talking about here tonight, but
The list, the list for paved, the list, the prioritization list is only for currently paved streets. And it's been the town's practice in the past that for paving any other streets, that that process is done by petition wherein historically the town pays 50% of the bill and the adjacent property owners take 50% of the bill.
No, and I understand and clearly, I agree with what you just said. The police chief and the general public continue to enjoy calling me about the east end of the beach. And I would like some relief. Whatever the process is, I can encourage to work on that. It would sure be nice. And I'm sure the police department would concur that the east end of the beach, that's, that last few hundred yards there is terrible. And I don't understand why the, the good citizens and property owners down there haven't made a request to have that paved, but can we just add it to, can we?
Well, can I jump in there? You've got a different situation on the east end down there. That, that is not only a road, but it's also parking there. And parking is probably the main driver for impacting that road, the transient traffic, not the residents access. So I think that if you, if you want to do a whole list of you looking at all of the streets, all unpaved streets, what those costs are, I don't know what that cost is. I wasn't aware of that before we came into the meeting, not. I think you can fudge over on Canal Drive and do it for a little bit, but now that you're talking about the east, the last 300 yards of the beach, we're talking about parking and that's gonna be a different thing. And I, I've got no idea what that's gonna be.
Well, I'm gonna chastise myself and say I'm probably out of order in bringing that up because that's not on that itemized list of streets there, but hopefully we can keep that in mind. So let me bring myself back in order here and
And at the same time, I didn't want to leave anybody out. These were specific requests of me to do this, so if I left, and I know there's other unpaved streets and I think we need to address them all, but that was not a specific request at this time, although we can do it later.
Okay, so
This you say was good. That was good to see. Little help to the town. You want to make a little contribution.
Where we are, didn't we have a second? A minute ago?
Oh, you had a motion.
We had a, we've only got a motion. Well, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
You got two seconds. Pat's got, she's got a second.
Ms. Pat made the second. Mr. Murdock made the motion. Okay. Any further discussion, comments?
Just, I need clarification. What is the motion? Is it, is it the three streets that are on the agenda?
The motion, as I understand it, Mr. Murdock can correct me, but the motion as I understand it is that these three streets that we have named
Okay.
are going to have an engineer's report on projected costs to the project. Okay? Anything else? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimously approved. We'll go to number nine. Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. As far as a fee schedule update to things that would fall under the Parks and Rec label or our facilities, it's been quite a few years since we did an update. Prior to COVID, the rec board did have some discussion on this. The suggestion of the proposed fees are in your memo and in the agenda packet that went out. And staff is behind Resolution 2004 and recommends that you make a motion to approve Resolution 2004 and the fees that are outlined in this schedule.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Chair, second.
Second.
All right, discussion.
I have, I have a question about the difference in fee daily resident versus, for a daily use for resident versus non-resident, which are not very large. Are these comparable? Did you get these? Because they're comparable to what other islands are doing? Because I actually would have thought that we would have had a slightly larger differential between a resident fee and a non-resident fee.
I did look at other municipalities, coastal communities and not, and typically it's around $10. Some of them are more for programs, but if you look across the board, it's around a $10 difference for a resident and non-resident. Um, now that fee itself, the current fee for the pavilion, which has been in place for a while, is seventy-five dollars for all day, which is the same thing that the picnic shelter is for four hours. So it kinda didn't make sense to leave it at seventy-five. So in general, that fee went up twenty-five dollars, but then a non-resident fee of ten dollars more was tacked on.
Christie, when, when the listing says resident versus non-resident, is a resident any property owner, whether they live on the island or just have a second home here?
Typically, on their form, what we take is their property owner address. So when they fill out, if they own property on the island, that would count, but it is a Holden Beach resident. Because sometimes people will call in, um, I think yoga is the only thing to date that had a non-resident fee, and people would call and ask if that was Brunswick County or Holden Beach. It is a Holden Beach. You have to own property.
Okay, you ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose say no. Motion carries. Ms. Ferguson, you're still up, number ten.
Madam Clerk, would you like me to try to talk without the microphone in my outside voice? Okay, it's been quite a few years since we have updated our engineering firm, ATM or Applied Technology.
Applied Technology Management has been our engineering firm for many years on coastal projects. We do have very large FEMA projects coming up, and the most restrictive rule procurement requirements under federal uniform guidance requires a competitive proposal procedure for contracts for architectural and engineering services based on two CFR two hundred three one nine B, two hundred three two O D five. The size and scope of the upcoming projects necessitates the need to engage in this process. In order to comply with uniform guidance, the town will need to send out an RFQ to solicit competitive proposals from qualified firms. The RFQ must, according to these guidelines, contain a written message for conducting technical evaluations of proposals with evaluation criteria and relative importance identified. So if you have an attached resolution, the suggested motion is approval of Resolution twenty oh five establishing criteria for engineering firm selection for FEMA projects.
Is there a motion?
There you go, here. Christie, I got a question on your resolution. The fifth whereas, second line, you said price is not a factor in the initial selection, which implies there's a final selection? Is that what you mean?
Um, you can't ask for price with engineers, but we would ask for their qualifications and then price would be considered as a second option. Do you wanna elaborate a little?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, that's what I was making sure, that's what you meant.
Thank you. Cr- Christie, the proposed criteria, did, did we get this from some type of template or some type of formation that the government has issued?
Yes, sir. We looked at templates for other projects that were FEMA.
Okay.
Um, in working on the RFQ as I'm talking to you though, um, obviously the memo criteria comes first, and then I've been working on the actual RFQ at the staff little. And I think I would like for you at the end of the motion to add for FEMA projects and coastal projects. We're looking for something that's all inclusive, but not engineer firm.
Any more questions, comments? Motion, I make a motion, we approve the Resolution twenty oh five?
As amended.
As amended, thank you. Motion made by Mr. Tyner, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Sullivan, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. She unanimously approved. Number eleven. Mr. McGrany.
Yes, sir. If I could introduce Mr. McGrany. Uh, Mr. McGrany, this is his first appearance before the commissioners. Uh, Daniel will be, uh, completing his master's in accountancy, uh, in just a few short days. And will be joining the staff here full-time upon his completion. He's been working part-time, uh, since Aprilish, you know, since the semester started. And, uh, he's already contributed immensely to the administrative side of the workforce here. And, uh, we're looking forward to him joining us.
So AT&T has proposed a, uh, rent reduction in, that's shown in the attached memo here, uh, for the water tower. And we think that it'd be in the town's best interest to, um, deny this request based off of the improvements we've recently made at Water Tower.
How much, uh, what kind of money we're looking at?
Um, over the course of the term-
One fifty-four to one forty-eight?
Yes, sir.
About forty grand?
Dave, David, what other firms are, are using the water tower? I mean, you may not know them all, I'm just curious.
There's, there's several.
Several.
Horizon up there?
Horizon AT&T, there's, um, collectively, on an annual basis, uh, the town's grant on that water tower is assessed by a hundred thousand dollars. So this is one of several.
The, the other question I have is, we refer to improvements to the water tower. What improvements do we make to the water tower that would be of benefit to AT&T?
Well, we painted it.
Paint job work, I understand.
Well, I understand, but that doesn't, that doesn't help AT&T.
The two-year process that we went through in order to paint that required that the cabling and the antenna farm up top, all of that had to be reworked.
Yep.
Any of the other companies ask for a reduction?
Not at the time, and, uh-
Just AT&T?
Yep, and their, their end is actually not the highest of, of the companies.
Make a motion, we decline AT&T's request?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Tyner and seconded by Mr. Murdoch to deny any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. She unanimously denied. Thank you, Mr. McGrany. Eleven A, CARES. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir. The county has, uh, received a second apportionment of the CARES Act funding, CARES Act two. That distribution is, uh, it can make the county on the amount of two point seven seven million dollars. The county is subsequently making the distribution to the towns based on the same methodology that the sales package distribution is made. Um, and that is what it is. That, that is the way that the first apportionment was made. That's the way that the second apportionment is going to be made. The bottom line, uh, on this is that from the county and the town's perspective, that's probably the most simple way, uh, to do that in order to receive the funds, which are on the order of about nine thousand dollars to the town. We have to turn down, um, the distribution of the CARES Act funding that was mandated by session law twenty twenty eight, House Bill ten twenty three. And that's what the recommendation is here, is to, um, let's just go ahead and accept the money by turning the, uh, the pound, turning the CARES Act funding down so the county can receive it and then subsequently disperse it to the town. I'm asking the board to approve the sample turn-down letter. That's the second page and the third page in your, uh, handout.
Everybody understand what we need? Looking for a motion, folks?
I make a motion that we approve the declination letter as outlined here and recommended by the town manager.
Take it.
All right, Mr. Tyner made the motion, Mr. Brown seconded the motion. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan for discussion.
Could you please explain the difference in the money? The, the reason that we're going to decline this as opposed to accepting the proposal?
The, um, FEMA reimbursements, we spent about seventy thousand dollars on, um, for things that, uh, we will have, we will or have submitted for FEMA reimbursement. We do not know if we're going to be approved for all of those. This money, we cannot double dip, you know, we can't, um, but this money is more generic in nature. We don't have to specifically justify it. Um, but the FEMA process is going to require, uh, specificity in, in, in those things, so.
I mean, the, the difference is, we've expended roughly seventy thousand dollars. They wanna reimburse us at seventeen thousand dollars, and that's why we're gonna reject that, that proposal.
All right, ready for a motion? I mean, a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. She unanimously approved. Ms. Pat?
Okay, I, um, I just thought that it would be good if the board could get approval of the land use plan changes behind us while it was still fresh in everybody's memory. Remember back in, early in the year, we had a discussion with the majority of the committee members of the land use plan committee, and I went through some things that I thought should be changed, um, that would strengthen, improve the document. Um, at that meeting, everybody seemed to be in agreement, so I put it into the document. And we were going to discuss and vote on it in March, but of course, March was our first meeting of stopping all but mandatory business. So this is exactly what we had discussed back in January. It's just now put into the document for the board to make any last comments or considerations that we can then hopefully as a board accept the land use plan that we want to move forward for the town to have on record. I know that we still have to have a, uh, public meeting about the finalized version. Um, and that can happen when it's appropriate. But to me, getting the commissioners to say, yes, this is the version that we bless, doesn't have to wait for that. And the sooner we get it done, the better.
And exactly what changes did you make to the land use plan?
They're in red.
Huh?
They're in red.
I, I would make a motion that we accept the land use, the amended land use plan except for goal four two B, which according to our advisor, Wes McLeod, would go against the state seven B planning guidelines, which to my knowledge, we have to follow the seven B guidelines.
Anybody got a comment about his suggestion? Not?
It's a, my understanding is that he recommends it, he encourages it, but I was not under the impression that the change we made to the goal would be unacceptable, but it might have to have a review. Tim, am I correct in that? It's okay. Um, Wes came back and suggested and encouraged us to leave goal four point two as was written. My understanding was, yes, it is, he encourages it, he recommends it. It's not an absolute mandatory, but it could mean that the whole thing has to go back into a review. Am I correct in that? So if we keep it as it was originally, there's nothing in here that we think has to go through a full, formal review again.
And so my, my motion stands.
I understand that.
Second. Okay, Mr. Murdoch made the second. Any further discussion?
Pat, I, I'm not sure I understood that last bit there. Are you, are you now saying we're not gonna take the change? You think we shouldn't take the changes that are here, or we should keep them? I'm, I'm a little confused by that conversation.
The, the change that we put in originally, then went in front of Wes. And then he said, he made the recommendation not to keep it, okay? For, for simplicity, moving forward without any glitches. So I understand that. We didn't know that when we changed it, but I don't think it's a big enough deal to have to go through more rework. Um, so I'm, I am fine with that. That we leave it as it originally was.
Before the changes?
Before this change, yes.
All right. Everybody understand where we are?
Mm-hmm.
Hang on one second, I have one item. On page thirty-two, thirty-three, at the bottom of page thirty-two, it's talking about Lockwood Folly inlet. And at the top of page thirty-three, says the town strongly supports the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers least-cost policy of dredging and dredge sand placement. Uh, is that policy still in effect? Thought I understood that the Corps no longer uses the least-cost policy.
That's their, that's their existing policy now, whether they follow it or not.
Okay, so it's still a policy?
It's under discussion, I think it's under dis-
It's been amended.
It's been, that's what I was trying, is it amended or it's under discussion to amend it?
I, I had the same, the same question here, but I believe in the last couple of months when we were talking about it, they amended it so that they don't have to use that. But after I thought about it, I don't really think that it's, we're still in favor of that policy. It's not like they totally did away with it, but like the congressman said today, there are other things they can look at now, including, including that. So I think the town is still strongly in favor of that policy and that we should leave it in there.
I'm good.
Okay.
Then that's, that's what it is, it's a policy. It's, if you're not gonna override, it's just saying that that's what we policy.
Okay.
All in favor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. It's unanimous. Mr. Evans, I believe we're, up to you, number fourteen.
Wait.
How about number thirteen?
Did I skip thirteen?
Thirteen, yes.
Ms. Pat, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, this was another activity that, that the board had already had a couple of discussions on. And, um, it just seemed timely to bring it back. But I also had had, uh, questions from a couple of residents, as well as a fellow commissioner, for clarification in several places, whether or not the designation of a property, a str-
for clarification in several places, whether or not the designation of a property, a structure by square feet, is this heated square feet, is it total square feet? That, that, that should be clarified? For example, on the top of page forty-five, when you have front yard setbacks for structure size, and you've got less than four thousand square feet, four, is that, is that heated square feet?
We, just everything that we measure here is impervious area, which is basically outside structure, outside structure. So four thousand square feet would probably be everything, except for the, the E's, you know, we're going to exempt the E's, but other than that.
Is, is there a way of-
Especially the footprint.
Is there, is there a way of making that clear, so this question doesn't come up in future in people's minds of whether it's heated on, you know? It, it, it is one of these nuances that we don't typically think about until somebody raises it, and then you're like, okay, yeah.
Well, I'll go back and look, I'm not sure how it's worded in the regular zone, if they say heated square feet, but I don't think it does, because the reason it says square feet is because of our impervious rules and regulations. If you meant by heated square feet, then the exterior of your house would end up being wider, you would end up with a house wider than the, you're allowed by the width of the walls. So it says square feet. Then that, so I'm, I'll go back and look to see how it's worded actually in the zone now, and see if it differs to the way it used to. Now, it says heated square feet now, I can't recall. I, I think it just says square feet because of that particular, it should just say square feet because of that particular reason. Somebody wants to build a five, four thousand square foot house, they come in here with a four thousand square foot house, and in stormwater, they end up being under the stormwater percentage because the square footage of the house is greater than the heated square footage of the house. Square feet of the house is the square feet of the house.
Okay, I, 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 I accept what you're saying, it's something I had been asked, and I thought I'd ask for clarification.
Can't say. If you say impervious, then you gotta take into consideration if they'd have a driveway or a concrete deck around a pool or something, so you can't say that, so I don't know how to.
Yeah, that's, we're saying, I think all we need to do before we go any further, is I, I can look at this to see if we can get clarification, and make sure it matches what was originally in, there is a square footage that originally is in our ordinance, so we can look to see if it says heated or if it says square foot.
Okay.
In agreement, woman's ahead.
Okay.
Tim, I, I'd like to ask you one more question, if you'll look, have you got the document, page forty-four?
Yeah, I'm looking right at it.
Uh, middle of the page, number two. Page two says transient occupancy not consistent with at least two overnight stays.
That, that, that is a change, that's, that's being in our ordinance, that is not anything that we change.
I understand, I'm just trying to understand, make sure I understand what it means.
Okay, I'll tell you what that is.
All right.
They wrote that, this was, whoever wrote that part of the ordinance was a very intelligent person. If they'd wrote that ordinance in any other way, it would have caused our rental structures to be classified in commercial, under commercial, uh, structure.
Okay.
Because it would then be classified as transient occupancy. The building code and some of the stuff we're going to talk about later, the building code defines what transient occupancy is and the use of the structure. So whoever wrote this was very intelligent, they wrote it in a way that we could, you could build structures and then rent them. That's why it's been in there, it's still valid, I've seen it several times, the first time I thought, saw that, thought, man who wrote, whoever wrote this was really smart.
So does this mean like Airbnb or VRBO, that they gotta stay at least two nights?
Yeah, what it says, transient occupancy not consistent with at least two overnight stays shall be considered to be inconsistent with the best interest of users and is not allowed. In other words, you can't turn it into a motel, rent it overnight for a different bunch of people. That's what it means. If you're not renting like that, then you're, you're, you're in violation of, of this law of town, which is stated like that.
You rent it two nights and then these on, but you can't rent it one night and then turn around the next night and turn around the next night.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
Okay.
Can't do that. Just the whole intent of that whole.
All right.
The only other thing I had, Tim, is just a, a sort of a amendment, well, it's a change because there's a redundant word sort of on page forty-seven, in H, a ground level enclosure shall not exceed over a hundred and forty-four square feet per dwi- I think it's, it doesn't exceed a hundred and forty-four square feet. Either that, or it doesn't exceed a hundred and forty-five square feet, but does not exceed over a hundred and forty-four square feet is sort of a redundancy to me. I don't think you need the word over.
It looks like some of my southern mango base way, that's what.
I think the word over can go away.
Maybe word over can go away.
Okay. So you'll come back to us next month then with the final on this square footage, just so that we're clear, and then we can move forward? Thank you.
All right, Ms. Pat, I'm asking for your direction, are we ready to move forward?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Since I almost skipped you. All right. Do we take any possible action here? Everybody's happy? All right. Mr. Evans, number fourteen?
Okay. I want to read the memo that I sent you. Because I think it's important. The memo that I wrote, if you read this, is the planning special department often finds discrepancies in the ordinances that are either violation of state law, or problematic in their application, or have no practical purpose, or not in the best interest of the town or the well-being of citizens. The reason for this can be internal, external, or simply outdated applications. And when this happens, clarification and correction should be, should be followed for ease of use and understanding and for citizen clarification, much like what discussion we just had about square footage and that kind of stuff. But we often come across that, and sometimes they're antiquated, sometimes they got put in there for a reason, and as time goes by, the, the reason goes away, and I think that we've got a couple of those in here. Now, I don't know if y'all had a chance to review these ordinance changes, but I'll hit on a couple of them. One was, uh, was elevators, uh, the FEMA guidelines, the NFIP guidelines. They recommend hardened structures for the elevator shafts. Um, I'm not sure that's something that we want, our old ordinance under required breakaway walls. Everyone builds it with breakaway walls, the engineers design it with breakaway walls, and they seal them, and there's other statutes out there to cover that. But I think in the best interest of Holden Beach, it, it would be in our interest not to have hardened structures on, on our beach. When we're telling everyone that they've got to cut their concrete into four-foot sections, and then they gotta have a hardened structure that's vertical, that can take out piles, I don't think that's the best idea. So, it is, it, I, it is not a, anything that will affect us as far as our CRF rating or anything like that. So, I, I, we put in there that we would like to make an exception to that part that allows you to build the elevators with breakaway walls. Which makes more sense than, because we, we get a, we get a whole lot of, of structures now that actually have the top two floors of the, of the, of the elevator shaft. They use them as closets, but it's actually been designed as a shaft. And then they, if somebody wants to put in the elevator later, they can actually put the elevator in and just go around, keep going. They have quite a few of them, over the last couple of years. So, kind of, if, if, if not, we'd have to require them to have a hardened structure to have that shaft of the elevator, it'd be hard to put in later. The, the other one is, um, we, we had, where it says elevator shafts, we call, we have both the A and E zone requirements and everything, A, E and D zone requirements. We, we need to add those, that you can have it with breakaway walls, and, um, and with floors and vents installed. I want to go back up to D, kind of jumped over D, D's important because, um, it's always been my interpretation of that section. Better written in our old ordinance, but when we picked up the new ordinance, they had, like so many other things, they wrote it in their attempt of what should be better. But to me, it still reads the same way, but for some people, they don't, they don't read it the same way, and so we end up having to have a meeting with them to explain why, or, or what they can do. But, the, the way that's written, it's, unless you can really dissect a rule, it's hard to understand that, that, where it says the elevator is accessible under, interior stairs may be finished if approved, flood materials are used below the reference floodplain, uh, point elevation. Elevators was exempted in our rule, but the stairs was not, which meant that you could go up the stairs five feet and then it can be finished, going into the house. The one set of steps that was exempt under the ordinance that we adopted under NFIP, would basically require you to leave the bottom down below the floodplain unfinished. And I don't think we want that, not in the town ordinance. You can use floodproof materials and it's, it's the same thing. But we, it, it's just not clarified, and I'm clarifying it by putting it in the exception where it says that elevators can be finished, when now that one set of exempt steps can also be exempt if they use the same materials as well. Which makes sense. All right. Lots containing marsh or wetlands, uh, this needs to be, be clarified some, is that plenty lots containing marsh or wetlands is defined by CAMA. The town of Holden Beach code administrator or the Corps of Engineers may be developed, providing that the yard requirements are met, and that fill material placed landlord of the marsh line is not allowed to skip or wash into the marsh. That is, that's going to be a regulatory requirement on about three or four different agencies, and we needed to clarify who had that, that responsibility. The fee, uh, a fee of thirty-five was marked out with two fifty, shall be paid to them for each application for amendment to cover the cost of advertising and other administrative expenses involved. Uh, one fifty-seven, one thirty, we needed to charge more, that, that cost wasn't covered, all we were having to do. Developments that do not require state certification. We wanted to, it says in those cases where the property in question with the health department approved soil added. We no longer have on-site leach water on the island, so you don't have to bring in soil to cover up your leach field, so the health department hasn't, doesn't have anything to do with that. It says, when it's lower than the adjacent property, additional fill material may be added to bring the property up to existing grade or adjacent property, so long as, as engineered stormwater plan is approved. It took out the county health department having to approve it, that's antiquated, they haven't been over here in, since two thousand six. So, those were some changes that we, we, we felt like it was time to make. There is a line at one fifty-seven, oh twenty-seven, that anybody that sent construction, uh, will, will, will take note of. I, I went in last. We struck out the section that said piles supporting the structure in no longer can be no closer than seven feet from the existing bulkhead. We, we researched the old minutes. I researched the building code, we researched CAMA, we called the Corps of Engineers. We, we have some people that have told us what they think it may have been, but we can find no reasonable explanation why a pile should be seven feet away from a bulkhead. We can't find, if you, if you're, if the worry is that the bulkhead could blow out and the pile be, be, go with it, then the pile ain't deep enough. You, you, I mean, I'm just saying, it's, it's not a, and you can't tie, tie a bulkhead to a pile, you, you, you can't, it's not allowed. So, there is no real reasonable explanation for having that rule, other than it may have been tied to the one before it, it could have had something to do with septic systems. And allow more extra, back in the day, you had to have more. You had to have a leach field, and then you had to have an other area of that leach field thing, and the island associated with all. That, that may be how they accommodate, if that's the best idea. But it needs to go away, it's also limited to the building code. You can't do that. There is no building code to say you have to be seven feet away.
Is there, is there a number? Like if you take, if you take the seven feet out?
There is no number.
No number?
No number, you give, you give, your footprint.
Put it up against it.
But if you think about it, it really don't make any sense, the structure was actually built out over, built seven feet away, and it was cantilevered back. It made no sense whatsoever, it wasn't a, the only thing it did was build a structure that was iffy.
It is iffy.
Yeah, iffy.
Tim, I'm fine with all the changes, but I have a question on one fifty-eight, oh nine B. I don't under, I, I don't think the word either before twelve inches is needed, because it's talking about, it shall be limited. It says to either twelve inches above the average center line of the road adjacent to the property, but then there's nothing else, so, we're not comparing it to anything.
Yeah, but it should, it should.
Either just needs to go away.
It needs to go away, it says the amount of any fill material may be placed for whatever purpose out of the existing grade, and shall be limited to twelve inches below the average center line of the road.
Yeah, okay.
You said that was provided that the stormwater plan was approved, so.
That's right, but see, all we did was bring that other page in line with that page, that's all we did.
Got you.
And that's right, it's got to have stormwater plan, or else you can't bring that, because you'll be running water on somebody else's property.
Exactly.
All right.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, ma'am, need, looking for a motion.
You got to get, make a motion for public hearing.
Motion for public hearing?
Yeah.
You're gonna put a date in on that? Maybe the next meeting?
Yeah. Should we set it for the next meeting?
A quarter to, quarter to seven?
Perfect. Yep.
Looking for a second.
No, I made the motion, you got to have a second for somebody else here.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Brown for public hearing on this subject to be at the next monthly meeting at a quarter to seven, and seconded by Mr. Tyner, any more discussion here now, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no, it's unanimous, got that, Madam Clerk? All right, Mr. Evans, your number fifteen?
Okay, going back to the, going back to my first memo where I talked about the reasons why you need to change this. Uh, the state legislature took it upon themselves to rewrite a whole bunch of stuff that had a whole bunch of rules when it comes to land use, and, and in a broad stroke, they covered everything from what I do here today, to what the board may make a decision on. And they put it all in this one sixty-D, and went through and made some clarifications and changed it. And by doing so, the, it basically is going to require us to do a, a review of our ordinances. When Pat asked me a question a while ago, for the third time I was reading it, for the third time I was finding stuff I didn't see the first time. But, it is my recommendation that the, that the board allow the staff to go through the town's ordinances line by line and compare, compare our ordinance to these changes. I already know there's a few, and some we've already changed, like we can't, we, we can no longer limit the size of a hundred, we changed that already. But we, we need, it is my recommendation to let staff go through this, this new set of rules and laws, and compare it to our ordinance book and make the necessary changes. And the reason I'm doing that is because from a regulatory standpoint, these changes are, are not going to, are, are not going to be subject to, uh, uh, review or criticism because they're state law already, by any other board. The planning staff are going to have to enforce it, and no other board gets to go through and say, we don't like this one, or we want to change this word. We've got to go through and make sure that our ordinance book is in line with this new decrease in rules. And I think that in conjunction with us, with the staff of the planning department, going through the book, going through the rules, line by line, and seeing what we have that we may need to change, or what we do have to change, and then working with the town attorney, that, once we get a document, get to the town attorney, and in consultation with the town attorney, that we get these changes made. For instance, one part of it says that your, the terms in your ordinance book have to line up with the terms in the North Carolina bill of conduct. So you go through condominium, it's got to go- So you go through condominium, it's got to go away, which by the way is a very confusing term. When it's used in the public and then brought into a planning department, and that's why. When somebody says, I want to build me a set of condominiums, and they got one thing in their head, because that's a real estate term, and they bring that plan in to the to the. To the building department.
Inspection department.
Yeah, or inspection department, the zoning and the build planning over here have condominium in their words. The inspection department ain't got, state of North Carolina don't even don't even, you start to build a structure, don't even recognize that term. And there's several like that, so we've got some of those we gotta take out, we'll put in the appropriate term. That goes with what 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 we're really trying to say. Um, and it is, that's just me asking you to let us do that. I think it'd be a much better and more efficient process.
Make a motion with accept the the building inspector's request?
Second.
Yep, second.
Okay, you're the second, so Mr. Brown made the motion, Mr. Tyner made the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Probably say no, it's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Evans, for your hard work and your staff.
Thank you. I'll make it.
So we'll see you back, so we'll see you back in about six months.
Yeah, it's gotta be done eventually.
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Pat, number sixteen.
Oh, me again, okay, um, I had actually noticed this last year, and it sort of just slipped my mind until recently. About our, um, our structure for having, um, a designated backup to our emergency manager, who is the mayor. Um, so as you see in, um, the code of ordinances thirty-three oh eight. It discusses in the case of the absence or disability, the mayor, and they go through mayor pro tem or such other persons may be designated by the board, shall have exercise power. And that a line of succession at least three deep should be designated. Um, my knowledge, we've never done anything. And what this, what what really raised this to me is it would not be unheard of if we get a sweep of COVID go-through. Or flu or whatever, that we end up in an emergency situation, not like hurricane, but health. And our number one is incapacitated, um, and maybe even our number two is incapacitated, so yes, I agree with, we should have the three. And I think that, I think we should have two designated backups for the mayor. And we need to understand what's necessary and how it's best done. And so I'd actually like to hear from the mayor. Because he does the, he's the emergency manager, but if he was out of commission. You know, what sort of procedure does he think we should go through to designate the backups? Um, should it be annual, you know, it's, how should we do this so that we have two backups for you?
Well, I appreciate your concern, and I agree that it's a subject that needs to be addressed. Um. The one big elephant in the room in my mind is to have whoever the person is. Whether it's the mayor or whoever, be knowledgeable of the subject. Um, and and I don't want to infer the wrong thing or say something that's misinterpreted, but. The possibility of someone moving here and getting elected as mayor. You know, in a short period of time, and they've never seen a hurricane. Never been through a storm, never had an emergency situation of any kind, but yet they're the. They're they're the person making the final decisions. The same thing would apply for the second and third position. I don't have a. A solution that will cover all the complications that I can think of. But I think that. What would be critically important would be to possibly look at. On an anniversary date to. Appoint the second and third person. Um, as backups, as your, uh, as far as the way I feel me personally. Right now, uh, that's what I would suggest. Um, and and then then the argument comes to my mind, well, in looking across. The board here, um, you know, we have different people, different backgrounds, different talents. So. I ask the question, well, okay, Alan Holden, mayor gets sick or whatever and can't serve and and do the job. What's wrong with the board just immediately meeting and appointing someone? Um. Because of the emergency situation. Uh, maybe one person, one of the commissioners is better at that emergency than another. I I I could give you several scenarios and argue. For different reasons to do it different ways, I don't know what the solution is.
I mean, I'm sorry, it's Woody Tyner, I think we, there's a, we gotta separate it out, there's a difference between being mayor and fulfilling your duties as mayor. Versus your duties as the emergency director, I know the mayor is the emergency director, but you may want to look at, say, okay. And today, if you're absent, sick, the mayor pro tem steps in.
Right.
So I think that's already laid out.
Uh, it it. Um, it actually isn't, the way you read it, the mayor pro tem or such other person as may be designated by the Board of Commissioners. And again, the Board of Commissioners, we, in my three years now, we've never said anything, we've never specifically addressed. So I think that it it makes sense, um, and we're just having a discussion on this today, we're not doing action, but I think it makes sense. That we do something more formal, I I do agree with the mayor that, you know, it's it's. At some point in time, pick a date that we do this and do it, but I also think what's important is a sort of a, um, a a commitment that if somebody is designated. That they are going to be familiar and stay, you know, stay aware of what the emergency declaration is and. Whatever is necessary, uh, to stay abreast of activities during an emergency, it's. Sort of like it would be helpful to have a sort of a, what would you expect backup people are ready to do?
And where where I was going is there's there's the. The administrative side of this.
Mm-hmm.
Which we may want to say mayor, mayor pro tem, and then whoever the third would be. And then the emergency side, it may be, I'm just throwing this out as an example, it could be the mayor, the town manager, the assistant town manager. Or somebody else, I'm just, but I think we need to separate the two out.
Except I think that the way our ordinance is written now is that the mayor pro tem, if the mayor is incapable, the mayor pro tem. Assumes all his duties and responsibilities, so that includes being the emergency manager. So if you want to change that, you have to change the ordinance. Is that what you were looking up?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Am I correct?
Yes.
My read of the ordinance is encouraged to hear.
Yeah. And I think it's important because we usually, when we, you know, when we do the mayor pro tem and it's fairly straightforward. And it's usually a discussion of, and this really is only stepping in for the mayor when he can't attend a meeting or something or something. So there is more involved to it than that.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's it's just, it goes along with the job. If that's what it's gonna be, and and again, I just think we would be better off having something a little bit more ready. For the upcoming year. Um, and that that was what sort of prompted my concern of getting this a little bit more structured. And the mayor agreed it wouldn't be a bad thing to discuss.
Do you want to?
May I go first?
Sure.
In in keeping with what you had said about needing to get somebody, the ordinance also goes further. And describes the process to elect a provisional mayor pro tem. In the absence or inability of the mayor or the mayor pro tem to execute the duties, so that.
It's covered.
I think that may be.
So what you really boils down to, the the number one and number two are covered, number three would be the one. Possibly more identified, otherwise just meet and appoint. Okay, any more discussion?
It was just a.
I mean, it was just discussion.
It was a discussion and it's like the this consensus seems to be if we get in that situation, there will be a meeting and an appointment. And that that should be.
Yeah.
Way forward.
That would, that would be the way to solve the number three position. Did I say that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, are we at number seventeen?
Yeah.
Ms. Pat?
Yeah, this was just something else that that what we're going through right now with COVID. Um, and, um, whatever may happen moving forward. Um, I was wondering whether it would be a good activity. To capture the things that we did in different stages. That were, that ended up being. Um, how do I say it, not reworked or not overly challenged as, why did you do that, what difference did it make? And there was some discussion about, you know, yeah, did that make sense, like closing the walkways but having the beach open, things like that. So would it be, would it be worthwhile to put together a sort of a, um. A plan based on our our recent experience of actions or actions that we would have available to us. If we go back from phase two to phase one, or even, God forbid, go back to a complete shutdown. While again, it's it's fresh in our minds and, you know, things can be easily captured from. The different emergency management. Messages that were sent out about what we're doing, to just capture it in a document of, here are things we did in this stage, this stage, this stage. So if in the fall we're in this again, we're a bit more, I just, I would just say, we're more paper ready. To decide what to do. So again, talk to the mayor about this, he just said it wouldn't be bad to have this discussion, not talking about an action. But we did do a lot of things.
Well, I think we all can agree that, um, we didn't know that was coming. I think we can also agree we don't, we don't know what is coming. Uh. I don't know, I. I, first I would agree that things could have been done better, and I also agree that things could have been done a whole lot worse.
Oh, I I don't think anybody is saying better or worse, I mean, we reacted to the information we had at the moment with the steps we felt we could take, um. Um, and and I'm not criticizing anything that we did or didn't do as was absolutely right or absolutely wrong.
Well, I I I would also say that, um. I took a lot of heat during that time, a lot of it was deserved, and I also had, after things got a little bit better, I had some of the ones that gave me the. Most difficult. Hardest criticisms and sometimes words that. They're not used in church, uh. Some of those people came back and apologized and thanked, uh, the town for, uh, the way we did things, which was a shock. I think there was three different people that did that, um, which I appreciate. Um, but I don't know, I'll I'll follow along any suggestions that the group feels like we need to do.
I I guess, I would think that we might benefit from a type of lessons learned report. So we could just kind of quantify what we did and how effective it was or ineffective. And then pointing no fingers, you know, we all were involved in some of the decision-making. Just to look at it to say, well, this this was a good idea, it worked pretty well, or this wasn't a good idea, I'm glad we didn't do it or whatever. And and that way we would have, I mean, you've done this with hurricanes, it was done before. So I think we could just follow that same type of procedure. And see if we can just benefit from what we've done and what we've learned during this, and hopefully never have to use it again, but at least have it in a, you know, have it in a vault in case we do have to use it again.
And one, and Commissioner Pat is probably used to what I had to deal with when I was in the corporate world, we had to have plans and say. You know, if a hurricane hits the building or tornado hits the building or the building floods, this, you had, you went through these scenarios and you tried to think through. What what would we need to do, what can we do if this situation occurred, and then after they occurred, as Mike said, we went back and looked at the lessons learned. I think what you're trying to suggest is maybe we need to do, look at some scenarios, some of the scenarios you've already listed here, like. If if things get really bad again, we have to go back to phase zero.
Well, we we already know the things we did, and as Mike said, the lessons learned, if there are some things we did. That didn't work out the way they should have, that they were good ideas, but they, for one reason or another, didn't work, or. Things that we did and they did work and we all liked them, and I don't know if we'll come up with anything that we didn't think about and discuss and implement that was workable. But I, yeah, I think the lessons learned kind of concept, I I don't think that we're gonna benefit from sitting down and going through an industry. Some of the far-fetched things that we, let's not go there, but.
No, but but if we have to go back to phase zero, what, is there something, like you said, we might do differently?
Yeah, what did we do that worked, what did we do that maybe didn't work as well as, wasn't as effective as it was meant to be, so would. And was there anything else that got over, that that could be? But but mostly it's the experience of what we've been through, and are there some things there that on paper they look good, but. I don't think that they worked out the way we thought, and so you wouldn't do it again.
Yeah, and 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 once again, when I was in corporate life, we'd go through things like, what if there's a hurricane, what if there's a flood? They made us practice for a pandemic and we all used to laugh and say, pandemic is never going to occur? So you just don't know what's gonna happen.
Any more discussion?
If there was a lessons learned document, who's going to put it together? It's always the question.
Tom Andrews got his head there.
I, the only thing I would add is that this approach seems to be looking in the rearview mirror as if this. Emergency is over.
No.
We're still in a state of emergency.
That's right.
No.
And we don't know how long it's gonna go on.
That 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 was my point of capturing it now, like I said, it's the, you know, right now we're in a phase two and everybody is waiting for us to go into phase three. Um, there's, there's no, there there's no guarantee that we won't go backwards. In the latter part of this year at some point, we know that, um, or early next year, and so. I'm just saying the lessons learned is capturing what we did in different phases, um, that either. We thought were appropriate then and still seem appropriate, seemed appropriate then, maybe weren't as great, they could be changed a bit, seemed appropriate and, you know, don't do it again. Um, but I'm not, I am not saying we're looking backwards, I'm saying we're capturing what we've done with eye forward. I'm saying we're capturing what we've done with eye forward.
All right. Anybody got anything else to add? Actions or anything?
We didn't designate action, can we make a motion?
You can always make a motion.
Okay, then, um, I move that we ask town manager, um, because you represent all the staff, um, that the town manager have a lessons learned on the town's response to the different phases for COVID to be put together.
I'm gonna call, I'm, I'm covered up. I'm absolutely covered up with dealing with the, the hearing now. And, and I don't say that lightly, uh, by, by training and by trade. Um, I was an ops planner, uh, in the military. I would say I'm a certified planner with American Institute Certified Planner. I know what planning is about. We're in operations now. We need to see, we need to deal with the things that are being served up to us by the governor and react to that. All, all I can say is that if you, if you, uh, would like me to do something like that, I'm gonna have to put some things down. And we're in the middle of an audit that's been identified to me as a priority performance objective. That's, that's where I am for the next six to eight weeks. And what do you want me to do? Do you want me to deal with the day-to-day stuff, emergency type things in the height of tourist season? Or to develop a plan that's, that is solely going to be staff input um, without the benefit of the commission if you task me directly? If, if it's the board's desire to come up with, um, with hypothetical scenarios and things that, that happen, and the mayor, the emergency manager pulls together the board to make those decisions on the things that we do to react, I gotta have a break.
Well said.
I'm perfectly happy to do it. To pull together, just to pull together from.
I'll go through this, Pat. You're not going to be able to develop that in a vacuum. It's gonna take the staff here to do that. And, and all I, all I'm saying is that it, now is not the time to start planning for it. We, we have to react to what the governor says. That's what it comes down to. Remember the governor has his teleconferences on Thursday. We're having to react to that. And we do not have insight into the, the North Carolina Department of Public Safety's machinations on how they roll that stuff back. We just don't have the insight to it. And are forced into these scenarios where we have to react the best way we can.
Pat, can I make a suggestion that maybe we just recircle back to this after tourist season's over? It's only forty-five more days or so, I guess, give or take.
Or after we have a vaccine.
No, you can't wait until you have, it's not, this is not being, this is not being targeted at anything specific along the line other than at some point in time, we may get back into more restrictive. And so again, capturing what has worked and what hasn't worked to date. From activities we started taking in March and continued in April, we, we took different steps. The majority of them ended up being, I think, reasonable. There were a couple that probably didn't help the situation and you wouldn't do them again. That's it. That's it. If there is no benefit, people don't think there's benefit in putting together something like that. I think that that's not the best thing in the world. I understand workload though. Most of the information at the level I was thinking is probably available from, well, it will be available from minutes of emergency meetings and then the, um, the messages that the mayor sent out as the emergency manager of what we were implementing in what order? And then taking them back again. So, you know, it's, it's, I'm not asking about what was going on in the office. And I know there was a lot. I'm talking about the things that were discussed and decided at commissioners' meetings and in the end were reduced to thou shalt, and then thou shalt not anymore in the emergency managers', um, messages that went out to the town. Nothing, nothing more complicated than that.
And, and I, I don't disagree with anything you're saying other than the timing. And I, I hear what David's saying. And as much as I used to have to do all that kind of stuff, I, I, disaster plans and recovery plans and things like that. I know, I understand how important it is. I just think we need to maybe give it a break and wait after Labor Day and just come back and revisit the issue. That's all I'm asking.
Well, again, this was discussion, there was not action associated with this, so.
All right, we're gonna move on if somebody has a motion or something. All right, we're going to go to number eighteen. All right, Mr. Tyler.
This is, uh, one of a several items that are, or one of two items I put on the agenda for this month. It kind of was in the list of quote unquote loose ends that I discussed last month. I'm sure we've all been bombarded with emails of concerns about replacing the dog park. It started earlier this year and then, like a lot of things, got put on hold, uh, because of COVID. And we focused our meetings more on what we need to do to deal with COVID. I, uh, asked Heather to put this one back on the agenda, um, so that we can go ahead and make a decision and move forward on it. I wrote you a memo that I'm not gonna sit here and read it all to you, but as y'all know, there's a lot of folks that, that would like for us to do something about the dog park. Question is, what, what do we do? I mean, there are several options that I came up with, there may be more. One is we direct the town manager to identify suitable replacement options and come back to us with a recommendation. Number two is we could request Parks and Recreation Committee to include a new dog park in their upcoming master plan development efforts. I think they're in the process or will soon be in the process of updating their, uh, Parks Recreation Master Plan. We could ask them to include it in their plan, uh, so that they're looking at the broad scope of everything around parks and recreation. We could wait for the Scotch bonnet site, uh, that we use for canal dredge materials to dry out. Or we could just do nothing. So in my memo, I said, one or two is probably the best, the best thing. Number two would be the more holistic approach of looking at, at all the town's needs related to parks and wrecks and, and not just take a one rifle shot on this one. We received an email from one resident that said, you know, you promised that you would do something as soon as the site dried out. Well, we could just wait for the site to dry out, which may be another, who knows, a year or so. So we got some options. This is just one of those items that I wanted to go ahead and get on the agenda and let's just make a decision on what we want to do. So I'm making a motion that we request Parks and Recreation Committee to include a new dog park in their upcoming master plan development efforts and recommend a possible site.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion. Mr. Tyler made the motion and Ms. Pat made the second.
I would like just to make one, uh, sort of comment or question. I don't think at this point in time, um, opening a dog park would be straightforward if we're still trying to follow the governor's guidance under phase two. So I don't think that not doing an immediate should be viewed by anybody as the commissioner's not being cognizant of a dog park is something that our residents want. But I don't think jumping and doing something right now would be in line with where we are in legal gatherings.
That's a good point, thank you.
All right, can I second?
I seconded.
Yeah, we, we got a motion, a second, we're even discussing, I guess, still. Nobody, nobody's calling for questions, so is there any more discussion? Hearing no more discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously, Madam Clerk. Number nineteen, Mr. Tyler.
Uh, this was the second one I asked Heather to put on the agenda. It's, you know, one of the other items that were under that loose ends category where we started work on this one earlier in the year and had some public speakers. Mr. Sullivan actually had it on the agenda earlier this year. Uh, before I get started on this one, I want to publicly apologize to Mr. Sullivan. I should have consulted with him before I put this on the agenda as he was leading the charge on this one earlier in the year. It was brought to my attention tonight that I probably should have at least consulted with him before I put it on the agenda, gave him the opportunity to put it on the agenda, and I did not do so. And so I want to publicly apologize to you. Not trying to imply you weren't doing your job or stepping on your toes. It was just, I had a burn on my saddle last month by trying to tick off some of the items on the quote unquote loose ends list. And so I just jumped and went on and put this one on the agenda. So once again, I apologize, Mike, it was, it was well intended. Y'all know this, y'all know this subject. This is one I want to go ahead and put on the agenda and let's just get a vote up or down on it or whatever action we decide to take. I just wrote up here in the memo to give you a little history on what we've done so far. It was, was tabled, um, in February to the March meeting. As I indicated earlier, in March, we decided to skinny the, the agendas down to the most important things since we're dealing with COVID. Police Chief Dixon was nice enough to, um, do some research on this issue. Heather included all his research, uh, here as far as the, uh, what are, what the rules are in this, I mean, the ordinances and the state ordinances and things like that. So, um, I'm not an expert on everything that, that the police chief included here. So, uh, Police Chief Dixon, do you have anything you want to add to the research you did?
Uh, excuse me for interrupting just a second. You said that we tabled this.
It was tabled in, according to the minutes, it was tabled in February.
To a time and date certain or just tabled?
Just tabled.
Okay, we got a point of order.
Okay.
You ought to have a motion to take it off the table.
Okay.
Because if the motion had been made to a time and date certain, that would take care of it. But if it's no time and date certain, it's just laying there on the table.
Well.
So, so you have to have a motion to pick it up and put it back in our business.
Okay, well, I appreciate that education. It was agreed to table to the next meeting, which would have been March. So I guess it's still on the table.
It's still laying on the table. I would think that's right. Did anybody correct me on that? It had me brought off the table.
So do I need to make, do I need to make a motion to bring it off the table before I go forward?
To be safe, yes, I'd say so.
Okay.
I mean, you make a motion to take it off the table, we get a second, vote on it, and then you get ongoing.
Would you like to make that motion or you'd like me to? Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we take the discussion and possible action on the speed limit west of the Holden Beach Pier off the table and have the discussion tomorrow.
Okay, anybody want to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? You opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, four to one, Mr. Brown opposed. Now back to you, Chief.
So what I was gonna say is, if you've had an opportunity to read this, I don't have anything to add, but I will be glad to answer questions and I'll finish.
Okay, once again, this, this is one I wanted, uh, we started earlier in the year. It's one that was on the list. I wanted to go ahead and get on the agenda and just either take some action or don't take any action. I just want to go ahead and check it off the list.
Okay, help me out here, Chief. It does, doesn't just simple terms of state North Carolina controlled speed limit on Ocean Boulevard.
Yes, so, so quite simply, and I'm still gathering, but I've got ninety-nine percent of information. The one piece I can't get, I can't find is a engineering study that was completed. Well, basically what the state law says right now is that inside municipal city limits, the speed limit is thirty-five, playing simple on a state controlled highway, which is RP one-one-one-six or eleven-sixteen is what our road is here. We have two state roads on the beaches, um, NC one-thirty and eleven-sixteen, which is Ocean Boulevard. The rest of town, excuse me, the rest are town road roads, are controlled roads. And law says we can set those, you know, but it has to be below thirty-five mile an hour. So, but on the, on the state roads that they maintain, the speed limit is thirty-five within municipal city limits. The exception is you can raise or lower, but it has to be based on a traffic and engineering study done by the DOT. I've asked the town clerk to locate that study that was done for the island. And to my knowledge, unless something new is developed, we're not able to locate that a study was ever done. It is my belief, and I, I can't confirm this, but I believe it looks like this ordinance with the forty-five was implemented back in the mid-eighties, eighty-five, eighty-six, from what I'm seeing on some of those times. And I'm sure that back then, the law probably said forty-five mile an hour. You know, I'm sure it was done with the best of intentions. But, but eighty-five, eighty-six is thirty-four, thirty-five years ago. Things have changed a lot and I believe we've just not kept up with the actual wording in the law. Kind of like if TM had a similar situation, that our ordinances have just not kept up with some of the building stuff. I believe our speed stuff is actually just not kept up as well. I'm trying to locate a, a, an ord, or a, not an ordinance, but a, an engineering study that says that it was completed. I've actually made a phone call to the DOT. There's no telling with everything going on. That could be a week before I get anything back. It could be a month, it could be six months before they say, yes, we have it or no, we don't have it. But I, that's what I do not have yet. But from what I've read, read and everything I understand, if you need to be anything other than thirty-five, there has to be an engineering study into it. That's, that's the short version, you know, I'm sure that wasn't short.
But we don't have an engineered report.
Not, not that I'm able to locate, like I said, unless the DOT's got something. But I, I would think if one had been done, then it, it also would have been something the DOT would have filed with the town clerk. And then I, you know, times are different back then.
It's been going on like, like, you know, we've raised it up for a long time, you know, one thing, in the off-season. And I would think if somebody just, just didn't pull that out the hat and say, well, we're gonna raise it up.
I don't, I don't think it pulled that hat either. I think it was set back in the mid-eighties, you know, and I was before my time. I didn't get it set back in the eighties, there would be questions.
I, I think our best approach to that would be maybe find out, you're gonna have, I think the state would need to be involved before we vote to change anything with the speed limit. You know, that's just my take on it.
But that was my next question, because it's a state road, we gotta get the state's permission to lower it?
To lower it?
Or to change it?
In, in my opinion, we're, I, I mean, I'm not trying to throw anybody.
Go ahead, Ab.
But October first, in my opinion, we're not as compliant with the state.
Go ahead, Ab.
Well, I, you know, for, for my two cents worth, I was here, I remember whenever that was going on. But I can't prove by way of anything in writing, cause all the records would have been here in Town Hall. But I do remember very distinctly, this, the state of North Carolina blessed what the town did with this change from thirty-five to forty-five. What my concern is, unless you want to go to thirty-five, I would recommend that you don't kick sleeping dog. If you know what I mean.
I, I guess, I, I would say that we should table this again, because there, there's the issue of whether or not we did, the town did that engineering report. And the other, the other thing.
The town didn't do it. Farm trespass station.
We have to, have to check with the state. We'll get a response from the state if they have that.
Maybe we'll just table again.
There's, and, and the other question I have is, since it was. There's, a- and the other question I have is, since it was done in such a distant time, is, is there, is there a grandfather clause that would allow an existing speed limit to go even after they passed this limiting statute that tells you it's supposed to be thirty-five miles within a municipality? So those are two issues that need to be clarified before we discuss this any further, I would, I would suggest.
So you're making a motion that we table this item?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Go on. Get the holder, mayor?
Let's see, somebody help me up. I don't know that you need to vote on that, to be true, but anyway, just in caution, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous to table it.
All right.
Sorry, Ms. Evans, it's tabled, we're moving on. I know you could have helped us out, it's tabled. All right, uh, where am I, twenty?
Yes. All right, um-
Mr. Tyler.
I received a call on July sixth asking if I would come meet with a group of property owners that had some concerns about vehicle or traffic over in the Wildoom section. Went over, met with four of them on July tenth, um, and first thing they did was talk to me and presented with a petition from fifty-two to sixty, uh, property owners, uh, basically saying they would like the town to approve speed humps or speed bumps at some particular stop signs, right at the stop signs, or if we could not do that, then the town proposed what they could do to help with their concerns about the vehicle or traffic. Um, as I sat there and listened to them, they, and I just put this in my email to the board, um, memo to the board, uh, they recounted a number of things, uh, to me. Uh, before I get to those things, I want to remind you, this group, if I understand correctly, has already been here twice wanting to stop, um, speed bumps, and I believe we turned them down, and then I believe, I may be wrong here, but they requested four-way stop signs, and I believe we might have turned them down, but what they talked to me about was, you know, the, the, if, the, on Halsted Street, where you're crossing over Carolina Avenue, Brunswick Avenue East, that folks are just barely slow enough for those stop signs and going on, or they're just blowing right through them. Uh, one resident put a remote camera on their-
Oh?
Home, yes.
On our thing here, this is concerning by Wildoom neighborhood residents to install speed bumps at specific locations. We don't have nothing on there about a four-way stop, stop sign.
On the petition.
Okay, but it's not on, it's not on our thing here, so we need to skip to what we've got on the thing. We've got speed bumps on here, so, I mean, we, we, I don't see how we can be discussing a four-way stop sign.
I'm not asking you to vote on a four-way stop sign, I was just gonna mention that the residents-
Based out of context.
Okay, whatever.
Okay.
All right, um, the residents taught a remote camera on their house and filmed the inters, one of the intersections, Carolina Avenue and Halsted Street, for an hour, and on the video, they captured nine events where the driver either didn't stop, or a road, a road did a rolling stop. Uh, they also mentioned a situation recently where a Holden Beach police officer didn't stop for one of the stop signs and almost hit somebody. Um, they talked about the uniqueness of, of, uh, Carolina Avenue, Brunswick Avenue East, and that they're long thoroughfares going through those neighborhoods, uh, which is unique for most of the beach. Um, they also mentioned that in addition to speed bumps, that they were interested in converting those intersections to four-way stops. They mentioned that there's some bushes on a vacant lot at the southeast corner of Brunswick Avenue East and Halsted are overgrown, creating a challenge to see an ongoing traffic on the, on the, um, on Brunswick Avenue East, so there's no stop sign there, you can't, you can barely see them because of the overgrown bushes, that's a concern. Um, you can read the other, you can read the other two there. Um, I told the representatives that I would place this item, the item in their petition on the agenda for discussion and possible action. Uh, what I'd like to make a motion is that we recommend that Police Chief Dixon and other town employees, as needed, review the situation and come back to the August board meeting with their evaluation and any recommendation to address the residents' concerns. I thought it was very, um, significant that fifty-two out of sixty people signed the petition asking us to do something, and they've already been here twice before.
I'll second that.
All right, Mr. Tyler made the motion. Brian Murdock made the second, any discussion? Hearing none.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Brown.
Is there anything legalities like speed bumps and everything, I know there's certain laws that affect those? Correct?
I don't know. We'd have to find out.
I think that would be one of the first steps before we go voting on anything, you know, I mean, but I, that's just me. But we've already blew our detail here, our discussions, what we were talking about. You've jumped over about four items when you got one item on here. Okay, that's what's on the agenda, okay?
Jared, I understand.
Read the agenda closely.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
So next time, if we're gonna do that, I mean, I just want to make this clear. If we're gonna just put a little something on there and we're gonna add to it, then that's all well and fine, but let's have it understood now. If not, let's stick to what's on the agenda.
Okay, the residence request is speed bumps, that is what is on the agenda. They said they would also have, have some other concerns.
Where, where's speed bumps at here?
Speed bump says right here on number twenty, install speed bumps-
Where are four-way stop signs?
I didn't ask for four-way stop signs, they said, they, they mentioned it, but they're not asking for that. They, they said they would like those, um-
Okay, the mo, the motion is to have the chief and staff to review, but-
I, I would just like to comment on this, because-
Okay, help me out, if I got a mo, I got a motion, I got a second, it's a discussion, yeah.
Yeah.
Discussion. As I, I have a little experience in my, in my former life with people asking to have things done. And when I read this, this is, this is an enforcement question. So, I know we all, you know, everybody, when we asked them to do more, it, it, we're putting them thin, but this is something where a police officer sits there and gives out a ticket or two, and that stops the people from doing what they're doing. And I don't see, I'm always talking about logic. I don't see where if people are rolling through a stop sign, putting a speed hump, which all that, all that does is slow you down a little bit, will stop you from rolling through the stop sign. It won't, it won't have any effect, it doesn't work. They're asking, I, I mean, they have a problem, they'd like it fixed, but putting a speed hump in there isn't gonna do it, and it can expose the town to civil liability if an accident occurs. Those, those are the facts, so I, I, I don't think, I mean, this is my opinion, I don't think we have to waste the time of the people in the town to, to figure that out, I think, I think the chief would agree that if they gave out some summonses, that would effectively slow it down, it may not solve it totally, but it will go somewhat to solving that, and we don't need a study, that, that's just human nature.
Yeah.
So.
Enforcement may be the best solution, but I would disagree with you on that, because you got a turnover, weekly turnover of I don't know how many people that's not running the same stop sign, so-
I got you, but the, but the word goes out.
Well, these residents have asked for something to be done, and I think as far as my opinion and what, and what I'm concerned is that we owe it to them to do something. If it's enforcement and having a police officer sitting down there to handle it, then that's what we need to do. Maybe more police presence is the answer, but they're asking for something to be done.
Anything else? We have the motion, you want to call for the vote on the motion?
Yes.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Three, is it three to two?
Yep.
We, we're voting to have the town personnel do a study to find out what to do, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know very-
To review the concerns of the property owners and bring back to the August board meeting an evaluation of the situation, a recommendation to address their concerns. It's not a study, it's, it's a review the concerns and bring back a recommendation, which I don't disagree with you, Mike, but I think that-
What is the recommendation going to be based on?
It could be do nothing.
It could be as simple as what you said, which is, we will increase our, our, our staff there and watch the situation and give tickets as necessary, it can be, we'll up the enforcement in that vicinity, but it's for the chief to make that recommendation of what's the best thing to address the residents' concern.
Okay, we've had a motion, we've had a vote. The motion passed, as I understand it, three to two, so the discussion is over, we're moving to the next item, which is Town Manager's Report, number twenty-one, Mr. Hewitt.
Yes, sir, we've got, uh, several things, and I will attempt to expedite my briefing to you tonight. Just want to let you know that the, our beach strand solid waste hauling service, that's the trash on the beach strand, that contractor has withdrawn, and, uh, effective last week, Public Works is managing, uh, with a substitute provider, and hopefully we can get through, uh, till the season's over. Our seasonal police and beach ranger committee, at its initial meeting on the second of July, the committee has set its monthly schedule, which is the first Thursday of each month. Um, they organize the initial approaches and have, uh, some undertakings when we get back together, the, uh, the, the first meeting in August. Lift station three, status on that, as a reminder, that construction period is two-hundred-and-seventy calendar days, beginning the twenty-third of March and ending uh, the week before Christmas, to date, the contractor is, uh, just under fifty percent complete based on time. Four payment applications, uh, in the amount of approximately three-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars have been processed, plus payments in the additional amount of approximately a hundred-and-sixty-one thousand to the acceptance group for the vacuum pump skid and ninety-four hundred dollars to the custom controls for our SCADA equipment. The SCADA equipment is significantly less expensive than on the first, um, lift station, because that provided the backbone and the, uh, the infrastructure, so this is a, a, a less cost for the SCADA equipment. Major work items completed to date, the, uh, uh, temporary shoring of the lower-level ceiling while waiting for fabrication of permanent structural support column, columns has taken place. We've constructed the concrete columns and second-floor slab and beams. The vacuum pump skid has been placed on the second-floor slab. Light gauge metal frame for the vacuum pump room has been installed, and all electrical rough-in and underground services have been completed. Ongoing work includes a continuation of the building rough-in, including exterior sheeting and electrical replacement of the roof trusses, sheeting and metal roofing, based on the contractor's construction schedule and the work completed to date, the projects on schedule uh, to be completed prior to the contract completion date, and that's barring, uh, any acts of God like hurricanes, which we hope do not happen. Um, wanted to give the bud, the board a, uh, preliminary end-of-year budget status report. Uh, some of the highlights that we're seeing, uh, in our, in our end-of-year budget, uh, for the operational accounts, the general fund, the water and sewer account, the occupancy tax account, and the canal dredging count, uh, show that everything's in the black, the required-
The required counterfund transfers have taken place, and of special note there is that we have been fortuitous in our revenue collections in all of those funds, to, to an extent that no fund balance appropriations, even though they were budgeted, did not have to be made. Revenue highlights, the property tax collections are a hundred and four point, a hundred point four percent above what was budgeted. Our major North Carolina, uh, distributed revenues are good, sales tax distributions are seven percent above what was budgeted. Utilities franchise tax is also five percent above what was budgeted. Uh, of special note, the building inspections revenues came in at a whopping thirty percent above what was budgeted, and our water and sewer use charges, uh, were about five percent above what we get budgeted, and again, these are revenues. Um, on another note, our accommodation tax collections are seven percent, a little bit more than seven percent above what was budgeted. Now that can be turned off tomorrow, and it also includes last summer's revenues, but, um, in a, for the entire year, uh, we were seven percent above. Um, what does that mean in terms of the actual, regardless of what the budget said, the budget, the actual says, the actual revenues to, uh, compared to the actual expenses to the general fund, we ended up about five-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars ahead in the general fund, water and sewer is a hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand dollars ahead, and that also includes the work to date that had been done on the sewer lift station, again, without the appropriation of fund balance that had needed to be done. And B part, uh, with the transfers out to the capital accounts, that's ended up at two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars ahead, and then the canal dredging account, um, that's about three-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars ahead. But again, that does not show the fund balance appropriation, the, uh, the canal dredging, uh, accounts are, are pretty flush, they've got about two million dollars saved in escrow for that account, for that fund. So that's, we are, we're looking pretty good, I feel pretty good about the end-of-year, uh, for the budget, uh, it is, it is subjected to our final year ending entries and audit. Um, the line-by-line, I point out to the board and the people that may be listening in, that this report of all the funds is on our website, and we, where we post on a monthly basis, the budget, the actual work here. Uh, the auditor's schedule, um, our, the staff's end-of-year bank reps have been finalized, our job balances have been struck, provided us to the auditor today, there are a few housekeeping items that are due by the end of the week to the auditor, and next week is the auditor's final field work, and we are on schedule, if not ahead of schedule. To be certain, we are ahead of where we were this time last year, this time last year, we still met the government commissions deadline. Internal controls, uh, owed the board some feedback on that. Um, I would like to point out that Mr. McRaney's addition to the staff is going to facilitate our financial reporting and the compartmentalization of the financial, finance department's, uh, functions. In addition, we've obtained assistance from Thompson and Price, uh, which is a prior, prior auditor, uh, for the town to assist in reviewing of the financial report draft and the preparation of our accounting and finance information. Uh, we have, we're feeding the appropriateness of the segmentation of duties, and that, I would like to point out, that was facilitated by the implementation of the classification plan, by going through the job descriptions, that, that helps, and we pretty much zeroed out um, that to my satisfaction. There have been a few, I would, I would say they're minor administrative clauses, but they are important, uh, and procedures that, uh- but they are important, uh, and procedures that, uh, were in the internal control report. One of those is that salary changes in our system are now restricted to the town clerk as far as being able to put those into the system. And that's separate from the person that prepares the payroll. We've implemented a program where we change our finance system passwords on a quarterly basis and also, uh, have a process by which our debt covenants are reviewed quarterly and reported in the AFR, the County Finance Information Report. And the last point that I'll make there, um, and this is, this is for the board's concurrence, is my opinion is that that report, um, uh, stipulated that the debt margins and the amount of debt that the town carries, uh, should be, it is, it is decreed by the local government commission on how much debt you can have. But that report stated that it, that it was up to the manager to decide what that is. That I submit to the board, um, that that is not up to the manager's job. The government body is the one that is the taxing authority and it is, that it is your job to make those decisions. I can't just go make a debt application to the local government commission. Y'all have to do that, so I'm just pointing that out. The generator, uh, uh, status as of last week, it was sitting on a dock in Brazil. Probably take about three or four weeks to get here. It was due out, I don't know if it's left the dock yet, if it was due out and then in. It's gonna take three or four weeks on a, on a boat to Houston. Three or four days, uh, to get up to Garner and then a couple of days to install Holden Beach. We're looking at end of August for that installation there. The Holden Beach Bridge safety rail, the status on that is that, uh, contractors about a third done and they've run out of parts. The supplier of production has been curtailed through the COVID. DOT is awaiting a revised schedule from the contractor and expects late August to incur the second annual bonus. Got good news, got another hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, which is the final reimbursement from FEMA Matthew. That closes out the FEMA project and the Century Reach project from twenty sixteen. I point, I point that out, uh, from twenty sixteen. That was part and parcel. The Century Reach project had two components that were, that used FEMA funds. The other one was Matthew from twenty eleven. We just closed Matthew out a couple of months ago.
Irene.
I'm sorry, Irene. Irene, Irene and Matthew were closing, and we got. So these, these projects are long live, they have long tentacles and, and we just have to keep on. So it's good news, that was closed out. We're moving on into the Florence Michael project, which the sand search, the surveys, all required surveys to do permits have been done. And now they're with the engineer, he's punching and crunching. Looks like that permit has been submitted in August. FEMA Dorian is still in the environmental review stage. I don't know how long that's gonna take. While I talk about these projects taking a long time, um, and, and we have to stay engaged with them, that's not a, a, a policy that FEMA, uh, that FEMA follows because we're on the tenth program manager since Florence. We're going through about one every eight weeks now. In addition to that, uh, the North Carolina Department of Public Safety has implemented a, uh, emergency management grant system that we are intimately involved with, um, you know, because of, of our knowledge of the way FEMA works, the staff, uh, at, at Emergency Management has, uh, has requested us to do some of the rollouts, assisting with their, uh, beta test of the system. And, uh, we're, we're helping them as, as best we can. In addition to assisting the, uh, Department of Public Safety Program Manager in developing some, uh, storm damage expertise and, uh, and how to do it. Trying to help them out, they've helped us immensely. COVID, needless to say, uh, has presented challenges since it started with us. We've had four staff members that have been contacted, uh, two of those have been positives. Um, I just, I mentioned that because this is the busy time of year. One of the, um, the personnel policy was adopted back, uh, earlier this year. One of the stipulations in there, um, identified basically a user lose policy. We're gonna have a problem, uh, with how we're having to use the, the staff here and some of these things. So I am going to forecast, we're doing the best we can, that, um, I think that we're gonna continue to have accumulations of leave. And I do not believe that it's appropriate to penalize. Well, now we're, we're nipping it down, we're, we're continuing to nip, nip it down. But, um, with, with the way that, um, that COVID is placing demands on the staff, I don't think that we're going to be successful in getting everybody's leave down. I don't believe that it's fair to the employees to officially penalize them when they've been, they've been, uh, really put out, uh, since COVID. They've always been out. Another piece of good news, the Deal Street Beach Access deed has been finalized. That was a gift from the estate previously, um, that was an easement. In closing, the recreation programs, our concerts continue to be impacted, um, by the governor's announcing a continuation of phase two for three more weeks. We'll, we'll have to just keep, um, evaluating those, rescheduling, canceling as the season progresses. People are still, um, getting phone calls about participating in the tie dye program. Had over fifteen hundred dollars in t-shirt sales, people want to do those. And the outdoor yoga class is going well and have received a lot of positive feedback. Other than that, that's all I can add.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt, any questions? I'm Mr. Hewitt from Commissioners. Okay, Mayor's comments, first thing I'm gonna summarize. A thank you note from, uh, Dr. McIver and, um, his wife. Uh, thank you to the town of Holden Beach. We watched a crew of men and a really big vacuum cleaner truck, uh, working on storm drains. And that's essentially what it says, thank you. And, um, they're good people, I've known them for a long time. Second item, uh, hurricanes, just reminding everybody that as usual, the, uh, weather people are predicting a potential severe hurricane season and just remind everybody to make your plans, get them together and, and work your plan, uh, as needed. Uh, the Holden Beach Chapel is running one service per Sunday, it is eleven o'clock. There was a mention in some correspondence and also again tonight about the eight hundred block house and referred to a broker's fee. The broker came out well and the homeowner came out well, if I remember what was said. But just, um, for point of clarification, uh, there was a sales broker and there was a listing broker, the listing broker got the commission. I was the selling, um, I'm, I was the buyer's agent for the town and, uh, took the buyer's agent fee and donated to the town. So the only broker that did well was, uh, the listing broker. Report on Highway one thirty paving and Ocean Boulevard. For two years now, we've been saying we're gonna get the Boulevard resurfaced. And, uh, all of us know that are following the DOT news in this state right now is that they both basically don't have any money. And, uh, that money that we were hoping to have to resurface our Boulevard, uh, has been extended out into the future because there's no money available. The paving of one thirty from Shalote to the end of one thirty here at the south end of the bridge, uh, was one project, uh, at my last meeting with the DOT, uh, group. They have divided that into two segments to reduce the project cost from the whole to two halves and for creating a greater possibility of getting approval. So the half that is gonna be sent forward for consideration of approval is from the causeway to where you turn left halfway between here and Shalote, where all the hot dog stand is and everything on the corner. So from there to here is the half that they're gonna submit for approval. A report on the beach strand, the extreme west end of Holden Beach continues to have considerable change. And Ocean Isle Beach continues to come toward Holden Beach. So, uh, in many ways similar to the east end of Holden Beach right now. The high tide continues to come more and more up into the Myrtle Bushes, which means that the very tip end of, the east end of Holden Beach continues to erode. And, um, the inlet is still far to the west of where it normally is. So something's going on at both of our inlets. But I would also be quick to say in regards to the tourists, the, uh, uh, people overall, my observations, and I've made several trips up and down the beach, especially on Saturdays and Sundays. And, um, I've had other people make the same, same comments. But the, the people that are on the beach strand seem to be well behaved, more spaced out than they have been in previous years, trying, I guess, to adhere to the COVID directions, uh, given by the government officials. Just overall, the behavior patterns are extremely good. I've never seen as many umbrellas and all kinds of, um, sun protection devices. I'm just impressed with the way our people are using the beach strand, I guess, is a summary of where, where we are. I've never seen as many people on the beach strand as I have this year, from the beginning of the season to the end. And I'm extremely pleased with that. And, um, with that, thank you for everything everybody's doing. Thank the board, I, I, and I mean this in regards to the board that we have at this table tonight. It's such a pleasure to come to a town meeting and have cohesiveness, sharing of ideas and working together that we're enjoying in this administration and I appreciate it very much. And I'm sure our citizens do too. And now, Mr. Brown, as Mayor Pro Tim, share your knowledge with us.
First of all, to our new employee, good luck. I hope you find it very nice here and you plan to stay with us a while. Don't take the money and run, that's all we have to say, okay? And, uh, I've sat here during these meetings and, and I've, I've looked, I've constantly looked out here behind us. The one thing I haven't seen is a mask, okay? And it's really sad, you know, because Florida, Texas, all these other countries, you know, they say one of the best things that you can do is have a mask on, when you're social distancing. I know right now, we don't have a whole lot to say here, but I feel pretty comfortable with all these folks here. But I'm looking out there and I, 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 I see it and, you know, that's just trouble brewing because they don't want to believe you go to other places. I, I just went and parked at the food line the other day, I said, I just wanna see. The, the vast majority of those folks, they had a mask on. You'll run into one or two here and there. And, and, uh, you know, they, they want to divide off, but that'll be who gets sick, you know? And, and, uh, so I want to really, you know, emphasize that we need to continue our diligence, okay? We need to be very careful, you know, because, you know, it, it, the, all the statistics are pointing it, it could get a little worse here before it gets better if we don't get this thing turned around. We're very fortunate, okay? And this is just something totally out of the order, you know, I probably shouldn't say it, but sometimes I just have to say what's on my mind. I want everybody in this room and everybody that's listening to me right now. I want to the, I want for them to remember that white lives are important also. I'm fed up with what I see on the national media, okay? I do wish that it could start a little grassroots right here tonight and people would reach up and cut that TV off for thirty days. Don't pay your media bill, go to Walmart and get the cheapest telephone you can buy. And let's see how long it'll take to help change the, the tide of things, you know? We're taking our heritage and we're letting a few people destroy it. I've never owned a Confederate flag. I never heard anybody say, well, we, you know, all these things that I'm hearing today about this and that and everything else, everybody's ridiculous. You're gonna go and, and, and tear your, your heritage, what made this great nation? Hey, so everything wasn't peaches and cream, but that's what made what we are today, okay? We're gonna take a few and thugs mostly, you know, they say when they're running around, they go throw a statue down, oh, well, that's black power, you see? That's, that's sad, it's sad for a nation, okay? So, everybody here, Jeremy, on the speed issues, you know what I'm saying? Those are tough calls for you, son. You know how it is in a little hometown, okay? And, uh, but probably that's gonna be our best bet, couple of ticks, slow them down. What did my goal was it to get on you here tonight, okay? I was just trying to make the point, okay? And, and, uh, you know, so, but I think our main deal to remember is that we are still in a crisis mode here. And the less that we can bring to the board that we can put off for a little while, we need to do that, okay? Because it's like Tim, he's got his hands full. He doesn't need to be going here and doing a whole lot of things, because I mean, buildings up, you know, everything else. But, but, uh, everybody be safe, keep that mask close and take care of yourselves.
Mr. Tanner?
I just wanted to share one feel-good story. Jeremy, I thought you might like to know this and I wanted to tell it in public. My wife ran across a visitor from a foreign, uh, country a couple of weeks ago. Slightly older lady, uh, she was lost on the sidewalk. She was confused, she'd been walking for an hour, couldn't find how to get back to the beach. It was near the fire station, Officer Colton, is that right?
Yeah, Colton Ops.
He, uh, Jeffrey flagged him down and they took her over to the fire station and the EMS people checked her out, made sure she was okay, that, you know, he wasn't, something else going on. And then she, he loaded her up in his truck and got out on the beach and helped her find her family and her, and her beach stuff. So, uh, I'm sure, sure, my wife was definitely impressed, but also I'm sure this visitor was very impressed on the, on the hospitality. So I just wanted to, to share that story.
Mr. Murdock?
I just wanna thank again the staff for their continuing hard work, um, to the public that's listening. There's some, uh, the, the only way I can explain to people sitting in front of me is tired. They've put in a lot of work, a lot of long hours and a lot of effort. They've put in a lot of work, a lot of long hours and a lot of effort with a limited amount of things to work with. And I know you guys aren't sitting in here looking at us face to face, but I promise you, we're all taxed. We're not always going to make the best decisions in these times, but these guys are really pushed through, especially the building department here, because building, if you haven't noticed, is, is out of control, to say the least. And that's very good for tax purposes and a lot of other things, but it is very taxing on, on what we have to work with as a town. But I want all you guys to continue to stay safe and hope we all fare well through this thing. It's not over by far, I'm sure, but hopefully everybody will just stay safe.
Mr. Sullivan?
Okay. I guess I would, I would like to continue with what, what Woody said. In addition to the police officer, there were a couple of recent comments about the Rangers doing a terrific job as being the ambassadors on the beach and, and helping people out. And it just goes to show how open and friendly this town is. There was a lot of criticism when we were talking about trying to protect the people who lived here, the people who, who don't live here, who were saying that all we wanted to do was keep people out. Well, I haven't, I haven't seen one person in the last six weeks write anything that was critical of the way they were treated or accepted or invited onto this island. And that, that says a lot for the people who live here and a lot for the people who visit. The other thing I'd like to say is, is a fact that in the last six weeks, the number of coronavirus cases have increased by almost seven hundred percent in Brunswick County. Think about that. So although we've been very fortunate and we've had very limited exposure here, be careful, take care of yourselves and take care of everybody else too. Wear your mask, not only to protect yourself, but more so to be courteous and protect the people that are around you, including your family.
Ms. Pat?
I'd like to thank everybody who's listening and the staff for what is, seems like a long meeting, but it was sort of the norm a year ago. So maybe I'm a little bit hardened to it, but I do appreciate everybody's patience as we try to get through some of the business that can be put behind us so that as we get into hurricane season and everything, if we end up losing some time, we're not, again, falling further and further behind. I think August will be a little bit easier. And I echo everybody else. Let's all work hard to stay well, wear our masks, self-distance when we, when we can, wear the mask when we can't, and just be courteous to everybody and we will get through this.
Is there anything else? Madam Clerk, for tonight? All right, is there motion we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Brown?
Second. Decided by Mr. Murdock.
Mr. Murdock's second. All in favor, say aye.